Here.
Commissioner Welch.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here. Uh, we have a opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. If you'd like to join us, please stand.
Uh, let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we ask that you would give the commission wisdom that they will make the right decisions for the people of Arkansas City. We also pray for our first respondents, that you will protect them, protect them goddamn from their duties of protecting the people. We also pray for our city workers that you will look after them and protect them. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
If not, I move that we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Yes, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda for tonight. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Don't have any?
There's nobody saying that.
Okay. There are no awards and proclamations, and we move on to the consent agenda. To approve the June twenty first, twenty sixteen regular meeting minutes as written. You wanna go on and do the rest of them?
Sure.
Okay.
That's all one motion.
A resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to accept a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration for the rehabilitation of runway thirteen dash thirty-one connecting taxiways at Starthor Field, and approve certificate of special assessment for dangerous structural demolitions and direct staff to file with the county clerk for inclusion on the twenty sixteen tax rolls.
Mayor, I would move we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tweedy and seconded by Commissioner Warren to approve the consent agenda as printed. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. There's no old business, uh, new business.
Uh, designate official city newspaper.
This is pretty much just a easy item, uh, having the Cali Courier Traveler is the official newspaper. We just need to take action.
And this, this is due to the fact that they changed their name?
Correct.
And merged?
And merged.
Okay. Can we ever add another newspaper, if we so choose?
Um, there, there are certain requirements that they need to meet. Uh, over fifty percent of their readers have to pay for a subscription to the newspaper. It has to be, um, a second-class mailer, I believe, and it has to be up and running for a minimum of a year.
Okay.
I think those are the three major tenants of that.
Have, do they set that on, uh, internet readers too nowadays?
No, it's supposed to be mail publication.
Mail, okay.
Has to be physically mailed, I believe.
Alright. Well-
I would move that we, uh, designate official newspaper the Ark- the Cali Courier Traveler.
I will second that. It's been moved by Commissioner Tweedy and seconded by myself to approve the Cali Courier Traveler as the official Arkansas City newspaper. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Number two, under new business.
Consider a resolution authorizing an agreement with Union Pacific Railroad Company for the purchase of seven point two four acres for an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
I'll do it. This is one of those items we've actually been working on for, for, uh, two years, I think. Uh, started with trying to find a legal description and trying to define the boundaries of this project, um, or of the property lines. It was a jumbled up mess. It took Smith and Oakes several months to try to even, um, get a legal description put together. At that point, Tamara had contact with the, um, several different entities and with BNSF negotiating back and forth, trying to get us a good price on the property. This property is really needed for the, uh, uh, wasteland project for the water treatment plant. Also, um, in the future, we'd like to utilize this property for, uh, a hike bike trail, the continuation of the hike bike trail from Parrish Park, uh, eventually back down to the Travis Hafner Sports Complex and having one giant continuous loop. So, uh, we've been main mowing that property forever, as far as I know. Um, uh, there was really, truly no one knew who owned what out there, and this is our attempt to finally get that all resolved and back into the hands of the city. So, you wanna add anything, Tamara?
Uh, just two things. We're purchasing it from Union Pacific. Uh, we did negotiate for a very long period and we got the price down to thirty thousand. Um, and that it's the parcel right across the street from the new water treatment plant, where the depot was, but they tore it down after it had a fire.
Does that take in all of the old, uh, salvage yard too? The old one that used to be there?
I kinda think-
I think that predates me.
Yeah, I think it was right behind that.
Was right behind it?
Yeah.
In your packet, there is an aerial map. That's a satellite map, but, um, may, it's this one, but it, it's a little bit easier to see on your iPad.
Right.
And you can scroll in.
Scroll in.
Oh, I, it's the same map, but, uh, on, on our iPads, it's just better quality. At least it is online.
See actual legal description. Takes a portion of there and takes some of those.
Uh-huh.
Think I, think I, right here.
Um, or, it was probably on both properties. I assume that probably, it was probably partially on railroad property and partially on private properties.
Well, they load it off their railroad. They used to.
Yeah. Well, I was, I was kinda wondering if, you know, we went through trying to purchase this, is, with the salvage yard being there, will we run into any problems with hazardous materials, or do we know yet?
Well, the property, we're gonna, well, we're gonna be utilizing the right of way really next to the canal where we have an existing water line. Um, and so we would be utilizing that water line, correct? Or would we be utilizing next to it? Eric?
Twelve inch, we'd like to have memory runs along the canal at some point and potentially use, use that or repurpose that for an RO water.
Okay, and then this would be a double cased line for the wasteland, correct? It'd be a, for the wasteland? Yeah.
I was just kinda wondering about what we had done already to...
We haven't done a phase one or phase two environmental.
Well, that's what I mean. We haven't done that?
No, we haven't done that. Phase one would probably, what, how much would that run?
Several thousand dollars. We're not seeing anything that's reaching out to the canal that runs through there.
Okay.
But we haven't done any investigation beyond just visual.
Well, I know that, that, that junkyard used to have a lot of lead batteries and all that stuff that they got rid of and stuff, and I don't know if that, if some of that lead got in the ground or, or what, you know. I don't, I, I think it's, I don't think you bought it. I think it's right the edge of it. It may overlap into the, you know, part of it, but...
Okay.
Another question, Eric. Uh, on Canpack, if they tie into our RO water, will we, will they, they go, they use part of that canal to come down to?
They would actually utilize that twelve inch service line. That'd be the one we'd abandon, and then we would just, we would put a new line inside of it, is what we'd utilize that for.
We've had some discussion with RO, with pure RO, the duct lined pipe would be very corrosive because it's-
But you're going, you'll just run a, a-
We'll sleeve it.
Sleeve it.
With their demand, we're looking at four inch slipping inside the toilet match, if, if we get that, if we sell and direct RO.
And we have had recent communication in regards to that, as a, being potential possibility. They, they'd emailed us two weeks ago, I believe now, in regards to that possibility. So, it's still on the books.
Well, that saves a lot of money for easements and stuff. I mean, with that canal being up through there, it's gonna save, save a lot of money, I mean.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, like I said, we need it for the hike bike trail eventually anyway for the continuation. It's something we've had conversations, just preliminary conversations with, uh, Cali College in regards to potentially partnering or looking at this.
How would that tie in? Would you have to build that up? I mean, how would you ta, on that hike and bike trail?
How would it tie in?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, would you have to build it up or, or just leave it like it is and just?
We'd probably build it up a little bit, but not much. It'd need to be above the canal. We want enough space so we can maintain between the canal and the, and the trail. Um, if we get KDOT funds again, they require a ten foot wide sidewalk, so it's classified as hike and bike. Um, and that gives us plenty of room just to go with a ten foot wide trail through there. We could also, with the, um, wasteland to the, from the water treatment plant to the wastewater treatment plant, um, that's very low pressure and it has to be HDPE because that would be fairly corrosive fluid in that as well. It'd be ideal to, uh, you know, put that right on top and maybe where the line is too.
Are we gonna have to, uh, purchase any more land? On the other side of Summit? Who do we have?
So far, we're just dealing with KDOT on crossing seventy-seven. They're at the intersection where the bypass comes in. It's kind of the gravel road there. We've got an area there that we're trying to get permitted to cross seventy-seven, just on the south side of the bypass. And then we're in city right of way, but then we have to cross
Okay.
the BNSF rail tracks, which they've got several tracks there. Um, the permit has already been sent in. We've been in negotiation with them.
Okay.
Other than that, we are on city, uh, right of way, hallway to the wastewater treatment.
Once we purchase this?
Correct.
Okay.
You'll have to bore that, won't you? I mean-
Yes, sir.
Alright.
Well, since we've been negotiating for over two years, I make a motion that we consider the resolution authorizing agreement with the Union, uh, Pacific Railroad Company for the purchase of seven point two four acres for the amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
I second.
What fund does this come out of?
Water fund.
Okay.
It's for the water project, for the plant.
It's been moved by Commissioner Warren and seconded by Commissioner Welch that we approve the purchase of, uh, authorize an agreement with the Union Pacific Railroad for the purchase of seven point two four acres to not exceed thirty thousand dollars. Any other discussion? Uh, if not, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Item number three.
Consider first review of a recommendation from the Arkansas City Planning Commission to modify Article twenty-five of the zoning regulations to combine the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission and the Many Municipal Code to solve the problem.
Mayor and Commissioner, this was an item that was originally brought up at the work session back in May, on May thirteenth. Um, and of course, we also did this briefly at the June seventh meeting as well. But the idea was to get the, to combine the Board of Zoning Appeals together with the Planning Commission in order to have less vacancies, basically is what we were looking for. It was one of those sort of boards we're having difficulties keeping full tonight. Um, so the Planning Commission met at their last meeting last, last Tuesday, and they did approve of this. Um, they didn't have an issue with combining the two boards. Uh, there's certainly some language that we had to wrestle back and forth with. Uh, one of those being the two members that, of the Planning Commission that live outside the city limits that are required to have a statute because of our subdivision authority out there. They would not serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals as we have it written. Of course, we're still working on the final draft of this regulation. Um, but what I did, just to reiterate, I researched several other cities in the state that have been doing this, um, some as far back as the seventies. So, this is, this is not a new item. Um, one of the things that I told the Planning Commission that there's an added benefit to just, to not just to have the less people to try to fill these boards, but also the Board of Zoning Appeals now has a little more ownership of the regulations, so they're less likely to just openly, uh, take variances or exceptions. So, there's kind of an added benefit to adding this. So, staff was kinda behind this once we did the research and found out what other cities have done. Just kinda leave that open. Any questions?
Josh, on that, uh, when you looked at other cities, did, did, did they have people outside the city that was on that too or not?
I think it kinda buried. However, some of the cities that I talked to have zoning authority outside of the city limits, which we don't have. And in that case, you would have to have some representation out there. Since we don't have zoning, it's not such a big issue for us. I talked to Mulvane, who's is really complicated because they have, uh, extraterritorial zoning in Sumner County, but in Sedgwick County they don't. We try not to use theirs too much, but, but yes, there, there's, there's been some that have used there. All the members of Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals.
I noticed the main discussion on the June twenty eighth was the, uh, seven members. Did, what was their main complaint about seven members? Was it, did they feel we needed nine or?
As it, as it is today, the Planning Commission is made up of nine members. There's only seven members actively on the board because we have some vacancies. And so what we propose to do is move the two remaining Board of Zoning Appeals members to the Planning Commission. We're obviously not to that point yet because we've gotta do this first, but that was the proposal at the same point. But the seven, we talked briefly at that work session about shrinking it to seven, but I kinda feel that since we're combining the two boards, that nine may still be appropriate to stay after the twelve.
Okay. They have any, is that their main concern, basically?
They, honestly, they weren't that prepared about that.
Okay.
They, the Planning Commission as a whole was pretty open to the idea.
How many people were at, were they, did they have everybody there at the Planning Commission?
There were, there was missing one person.
And plus, we're two people short on that board right now, too.
So technically, we're missing three.
Okay.
Um, Tamara, is there any provisions in here because of the people being outside the city limits? They can't be mayor or vice mayor because if they were, they couldn't sit on the zoning board? Is there any provisions that denote that?
It does say that they shall recuse themselves from all proceedings of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Right.
Um, but I don't know of anything in this document that concerns whether they can be chairman or vice chairman. Did you write anything in on that?
I think we had decided that they're actually separate. There's a, there's a chair and a vice chair of each body.
Okay.
That way, the chair of the Planning Commission could technically be somebody that lives outside the city.
Okay, okay.
Now, if they choose to do that, that's up to them.
So, you still got a little more work to do before you come back to us then, on this?
Just the legislative part of that.
Okay.
Now, I, I would prefer to send this back to the board, with the Planning Commission, just because we made changes on this and let them see what we've done. Um, when, when you guys meet again? July?
We could have a meeting in July if we need to.
You're not scheduled to do anything this month, right? Okay. And you would meet on the twelfth of July?
That would be in the-
I mean, August.
Of July.
What, what did you want them to consider?
Well, there's, there's quite a few changes that we've made.
Right.
Yeah, and I'd like to, at least let them review what we've done because they did send, they did send this to us and then Tamara made changes.
Actually, I haven't reviewed it yet.
Okay.
So, that's, the next step is for, once it's final, it's still been staff making revisions. So, then, once that's final, then I review it, then I put it into an ordinance format.
Okay.
Uh, and then, I think at that's, at that point, I think we could send it back to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
So, that could be all we're seeing.
And one of the main changes that the staff did make to that, they were aware of the, uh, uh, the two members not being able to serve, they were aware of it. What might have changed that you may be referring to is some of the organizational, uh, aspects.
Right. Right. So, everything that's crossed out on here is, you, you've done that rather than Tamara?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Between me and Andrew.
Okay.
That's, that's all based on state statutes?
Well, and right, duplicate wording and paragraphs.
And there's some addition to that that's not in the zoning regulations, um, in municipal code that's duplicative, and that's some stuff that we're going to work on getting removed too. That, that, I think that was also in your packet.
Right.
Yeah.
Kinda describes what that is. So, I, I mean, that's separate from the Planning Commission, but that's-
I, I do wanna clarify. I have been involved and we've consulted together, but I just hadn't, we haven't had a final version yet that I've given it a, a final review.
So, what you're saying is, once you get the final version, you'll send it back to them, have them look at it, before it comes back to us and-
Yes, if, if that's what the commission would like. We certainly-
Well, they ought to see the final version of it. I mean, since the change is gonna be to them.
To what timeline? Where are we looking at? Do we have to pass this tonight?
No, absolutely not. Absolutely not.
No.
And you can't, you probably can't have that done by July nineteenth then.
It would be pushing it because the meeting is, would, supposed to be next week.
I would say by August, you know.
August, yeah. I mean, I didn't wanna table this until July nineteenth, and, uh, we've got a lot of other stuff to do before then.
And we wouldn't necessarily have to have a public hearing unless that's what you're asking us. We just need to represent it to them and show us.
I move that we, uh, postpone anything, any action on this item until, uh, Josh and Tamara and Andrew get together again to be able to, uh, send this back to the, uh, Planning Commission zoning board.
We weren't actually anticipating passage tonight, so that's, that's not a issue.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by myself and seconded by Commissioner Warren to postpone until public works can, uh, come up with the final version of the new zoning regulations board. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. S- okay, city manager updates.
I'm gonna give you a few updates. Um, at the last commission meeting, the commissioners tasked us with trying to find a engineering firm to, uh, do a traffic study for us, or at least give us a proposal. We had been visiting with MKC in regards to putting together scope services proposal. Uh, they contacted us, uh, thir- Wednesday or Thursday of last week and said they were not interested after we've been talking with them. It's just, it's not a big enough project for them to, to want to undertake. So, uh, we've reached out to another engineering firm to see if they'd be willing to and, and working out the scope and proposals. So, that's kinda where we're at in that process. So, we're still working towards it. We were hoping we would have had something by now, but, um, MKC, like I said, they, they dropped out last week.
Who's, who's the second, uh, who's the other firm?
PEC.
Trans, uh, Trans Systems.
Trans Systems, yeah, okay.
Have you already talked to them, Eric, or did they give us a price, an indication?
They wanna have a face-to-face, sorry. Um, actually busy with them today after being let down last week by MKC, but, um, they wanna have a face-to-face scoping meeting. We, we had a long conversation, pulled up maps, discussed kinda what we're looking for. They wanna come down here, take a look for themselves, really hammer out the scope between Nick and I. Um, and then they talked like they could go back, put a proposal together, get it to us before the next meeting. Um, the issue, I, you know, with MKC, throughout the five to ten thousand dollar range, so I may have, uh, misspoke when I estimated. But it is, it's all, it's all gonna depend on scope. So, um, we wanna narrow it down to try to fit that budget.
What, what you mean, what you mean by scope?
Scope, for instance, when I asked them to look between Birch and Kansas Avenue on First Street, identify the deficiencies that we have right now on First Street, and then look at, uh, the zoning and as that starts to develop commercially, um, what triggers an improvement on First Street. It's kind of a two-phase approach. What do we need to do now to address the deficiencies on First? Then how do we handle that as growth occurs in that corridor? Well, that seems to get a little bigger than the five to ten thousand range, um, theoretically with, with MKC. But Trans System, we wanna have a face-to-face, and, and if there's something we can do in that dollar range, uh, maybe it's just the first phase. Identify the deficiencies and what can we do now to fix those deficiencies and stop there. That might fall in our budget. Maybe get an alternate cost to get some long-range planning.
Well, I think that's the main thing. Yeah, I think that's the main thing right now, is the problem we're having right now, you know. And, you know, maybe it's a two-phase thing, you know. I mean, try to figure out how we correct the problem we have right now, and then later on, you know, as we develop that thing, if it does start developing, then we, we'll have to look at the next phase, you know.
Will they, will they do any traffic counts on Summit Street?
Yes, they were planning on. I mean, that's, Trans System does most of the traffic studies down in South Kansas, uh, in Wichita area. That's one of the first things they like to do is to identify, uh, traffic counts directional, southbound, northbound, um, and also on First Street, and probably in a couple locations.
We have had traffic counts on Summit and First Street.
KDOT does that every couple of years, yes.
Well, they don't do it on First Street, do they?
On First Street.
Well, I thought we had one.
Well, the-
No, we, Chief did one.
The Chief did one.
We did, and we put up a sign and did counts.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking about.
That's the numbers he came up when he led our last meeting.
Okay. Alright.
Alright, uh, any other questions on that? Okay. Uh, chip seal, radial lane improvements. We talked a little, visited. Um, Eric has a map put together. He'd like to show you if, if we proceed with chip sealing for twenty sixteen. These are the areas where we postpone till next year and work on radial lane.
And most of the streets identified on this map were last touched in two thousand and seven, so it's been nine years since we've, um, performed any preventative maintenance on those particular streets. Uh, this was kind of a revamp. Originally, I think I mentioned, we were looking in the Meek addition, the Bradford Meek addition, Highland area, all the areas that we were looking at doing the water lines. So, uh, we went back, we did go out and drive these today to verify. It's been nine years and they're, they're in, in some need too for chip seal. Um, again, each year we budget about a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy-five thousand for chip sealing. We have to rent a pneumatic roller, a power broom, and then what they call a nurse tank. It's the hot oil on site, um, that we go back and fill our truck with. So, all that, we, if we're gonna proceed with chip sealing, we, we need, need to get all that stuff ordered this week.
What about the other streets? It's, they've, have they done, been done earlier than this? I mean, is this the oldest streets?
No, actually, the streets we're planning on doing this year has, uh, are a little older. I think they're two thousand and five, two thousand and six, since we've done those. And the Bradford Meek and the Highland area.
But those areas are gonna be doing the water lines, so we don't wanna put the new chip seal on top of the water line improvements till we get those done. Then we'll go back and work on, and address the roadway.
And the reason I proposed radial lane, it's in pretty bad shape if you look at all the cracks. It was built in early two thousand, two thousand and one. We've been doing a lot of crack sealing. Um, our thought wasn't, leads into another item here on Summit Street. Um, you know, we have some potential cost savings if we get a contractor in town doing the milling overlay on Summit that, uh, maybe something could be negotiated, or at least they'd have an advantage kinda if we bid that back out because the, the milling equipment would be here, the overlay equipment would be here, it'd be set up to just move over. So, um, and it's, it desperately needs, um, some preservation, some new striping. Um, you know, that asphalt is fourteen, fifteen years old. Um, and our guys have done a good job, crack sealing. You can zoom in on the aerials and it looks like a spider web. Um, again, the cost on that is around the three hundred thousand range. We have half a million dollars banked at KDOT in federal dollars that we could utilize for this project. If we catch that out, we get ninety cents on the dollar. Um, the thought was, was to take the hundred and seventy-five, a hundred and seventy thousand we had budgeted this year for chip seal, use that, use, um, a hundred and thirty thousand out of the KDOT money to augment and, and to do radial lane. And then next year, get back on our chip sealing project.
What, what are we gonna use to do Fifteenth Street and the bridge?
Fifteenth Street, I estimate we're gonna have, and this is an estimate I'll know, once we bid Summit Street, I'm estimating two to three hundred thousand left over in the sales tax money. And again, we think that's gonna be around four hundred and fifty thousand for radial lane. So, say we have two hundred and fifty left over, which we'll know after we bid Summit, and I would wanna use those federal dollars, some of that five hundred thousand we have banked, to augment that, another hundred.
What, what's that bridge gonna cost? We gotta redo that bridge, don't we?
The bridge was, remember what that was?
A couple hundred, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think two fifty, three hundred.
Depends on how elaborate we went and if we went sidewalk.
And that, and that, that funding would come out of what, on the bridge?
That would have to come out of federal dollars.
And how much do we have in that?
We have five hundred thousand.
So, we, you're just trying to figure out how you would have best been that-
Right, right.
So we, you're just trying to figure out how you wanna best spend that. One thing we can do for that project, for the uh, for the bridge project, it's already identified project, so we'd actually get, I believe, a hundred percent on that. Cause that's an identified project, wasn't it?
Well, if we go, if it's a federal aid project, if you follow, follow the federal procurement guidelines, which we penciled that out, it's not worked in, we'll be managing ahead.
Right. Like, yeah, cause they, yeah, there's twenty percent adder, I believe is what it was. So really you'd be behind. We'd be better off getting a ninety cents on the dollar from the state and doing ourselves and following their guidelines for that bridge.
And we're actively pursuing grants. KDOT has a um, what they call like the.
Off-road bridge project.
Anyways, uh the one on Valley Drive and Crestwood Drive um score very, very low and are great candidates for grant applications. So we've just thrown our, our name in the hat on those two bridges for KDOT. It's an eighty um percent grant, twenty percent match.
Why do those other ones score so low? I mean, why?
Why do they score so low? They're built in like the thirties, nineteen thirty, uh we're getting some scour, some of the, the piers, the, the columns are, are eroding away. They're just in pretty bad shape. And what they call is um the off-road or off-street grant program is for those little small bridges. And like the cost on those is around two hundred and twenty-some thousand. Our share would be forty-eight thousand, they were gonna be the, the, the remaining amount. So we're trying to get grants to help us with this.
And Fif- Fifteenth Street wouldn't qualify because it's a major arterial?
Correct, correct, it's a.
How, how soon would we anticipate starting on Fifteenth Street? This year or next year?
That's my question.
Well, that's a good question. Um, I've been kinda holding back until we see where these numbers are coming in, mainly Summit Street.
On Summit Street, okay.
Once we have that number, um I was tasked by you guys to present what we think would be an estimate for the tr- traditional design bid build versus doing the uh Andale Super Slurry project and doing a design build with tho- with those guys. They've already given me an estimate on, on their costs to do that. Um, it was three seventy, three hundred and seventy thousand.
Yeah.
That's where they go in and they um just mix up all the existing asphalt, put N S T mix, slurry mix.
Yeah, will that last a lot longer than what we're trying to do? I mean, on their bid or not?
Will it last a lot longer?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I don't think the science is out yet on that. They've been doing it for five to six years. You're, you're getting great results. The cost saving is you're not hauling in all the base rock. The other thing is they can get in and out of there literally like three weeks. It's so much faster.
Versus being like a two or three month long project.
Um, there's ju- there are just several advantages and for no more traffic than we have on that road, I think we all feel comfortable um using that method or at least en- entertaining that method versus something like a Skyline or Fifteenth or.
W- yeah, we don't have as much heavy truck traffic on that part of Fifteenth, do we?
Right, right.
There's a lot of people that use that road.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Getting it back.
What?
Wait, it comes up.
Uh, if the, the radio lane improvements, if we would do that instead of the other little streets, you said radio lane is the oldest one that needs it?
No, it's, it's probably tied with east, east Kansas.
Okay.
You know, the old highway we took, it used to be old one sixty-six between the bridge and like Country Club Road. That's, that's getting fairly old too. But uh radio lane was constructed early two thousand, I think it's two thousand and one. So it's been fifteen years and it's time for some preservation or to renew that asphalt, it's getting really old.
Well, but it's ol- it's older than the other streets you showed a little bit ago, right? Radio lane?
The chip seal.
The chip seal?
Nah, I doubt, no.
Oh, no.
No, the chip seal streets are older.
The chip seals, some of those are some of the original old time streets.
But we, we did a chip seal in two thousand and seven versus being built in two thousand, so it's had maintenance more recently.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was what you were asking me, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Get back the water line in that area, when, when are we looking at that? I mean.
Smith and Oakes is still on target. Last time I talked to Chris, they about um have all the survey wrapped up and they think August, early September, we'll be ready to open bids.
Well, we had the same, same people, or bid it, I mean, like they did uh when we had them up on Eighth, Seventh Street or when they laid that water line up through that area?
Oh, the same company? I'm sure they all, yeah.
Yes, it's typically the same ones. There's Meek, Snowlog, Dooling, there's a handle.
They did a wonderful job.
Yeah.
They did.
And it was pretty quick. What about in the, the uh, on East of town there, some of the areas up there where they're having water problems?
That, that is, uh, that's a, that's part of the project too there, um, the Crestwood area.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, actually it'd be the east, east or south Crestwood, I mean, uh.
South, Sa- Summit Acres type?
Yeah, Summit, yeah.
Well, when we flush hydrants, we're able to kinda pinpoint where a lot of the source is. So this project takes care of the worst old steel line of source. Um, you know, we're trying to spend our money wisely. We think if we address the worst source in that whole Crestwood area, that others will benefit as well. They'll have to replace all the water lines at one time.
So you're gonna be working on the, mainly the steel lines in that area?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think some of the discolored water complaints that we get are, in that surrounding area are just flow-through from the culprit, the old steel line that we're gonna replace.
The main line that, that feeds it?
Correct.
What is that, a three-inch, what size line is it?
Four.
Four-inch line?
Mm-hmm.
What, how long has that been in the ground?
It's a good question. I, I think it used to be, was it Real Water District took over?
Yeah.
I, I can't answer that.
Okay.
Back to the streets.
Yes, sir.
Would we be, would we have a problem if we did radio lane, redo the chip seal on radio lane, right?
No, no, that's a milling overlay.
Exactly, yeah, we put new asphalt down.
It's a milling overlay. Okay. Can we get that done? About, how much?
Three hundred.
Three hundred. But if we chip seal, it's a hundred and seventy-five?
That's just what we budget and that buys us just so many blocks.
Okay.
So each year, that's been our budget for, since I've been here, is we budgeted a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy-five, I can't remember, I'm sorry. But that range that we just, and that gets us twenty-six to twenty-eight blocks depending on how wide the street is, um.
So if we put off the chip seal and go to the radio lane improvements, we would take the chip seal next year? If we do that, what areas would we concentrate on for next year?
I would probably ask to go back to the Brad Meek and follow up the water lines. That's, that needs it a little worse than, than the map I just showed you.
Okay. Okay.
Well, that, that's kinda what I just wanted to know.
Yeah, but then we're gonna be out of, but, but then we're gonna be out of tu- I mean, we're gonna be behind.
We'll be a little bit out of sequence, yeah. But that's a bigger conversation. We, we're gonna have to figure out a funding source, I think, for our roads here pretty quick. We got the, the twenty seventeen Clint project coming up next year that we have a three hundred thousand dollar grant that we have to match.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we have these bridges that we need to address, so that's a, that's a big conversation. Um, talking about how we wanna move forward. We, we wanna fix our brick streets. We're talking about maybe adding potential personnel, so.
Well, what you're talking.
Maybe that's a lunchtime.
What you're talking about is uh not just our cities nationwide, infrastructure stuff is, is not in good shape.
Yeah. That's right.
And unfortunately for us, you know, that's one of those things you traditionally look at a sales tax for, but given that one and a half percent's gonna be going to the hospital for the next several years
Mm-hmm.
and one percent for the next ten, it's pretty much sales tax out of our question. So, the roads will suffer.
Yes.
It is.
And we've talked about, we've talked about keep applying for as many grant dollars as we can get.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
We talked about somehow potentially trying to shift the franchise fees that we get from our utilities into fund streets, maybe even charging our own utilities, the same franchise, water, sewer, trash. Because we all use the streets, transferring that into a dedicated street line. I mean, we can be creative. The problem is, it's still all the same pockets. I mean, you're transferring money, um, but then politically you can talk as half-cent sales tax for something else, lease fire or something else. But um, I think, I think it's a, it needs to be discussed and, and um there's some creative ways, I think, we can kinda put some money. We're doing what we can as staff to, to leverage grant dollars where we can. The problem is we have to have enough dollars to meet our match.
Yeah.
That's gonna be a tough issue, I'm telling you.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, cause. It's just gonna be tough.
It is.
Yeah, there's definitely no easy answer for the, for streets. Is it, there is no dedicated revenue, period. You know, water guns, water business.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and every street's important for the people. I mean, you know, and you're gonna, what's gonna happen, you're gonna have to pick and choose probably the, the heavier traffic streets, you know, first and then work your way backwards.
Yeah.
But you're gonna make a lot of people mad too, you know.
Well, that's why I was asking about radio lane, cause school is on the radio lane on the west side, but east side also has school traffic. So which one's the most important? I was thinking radio lane. I don't know what the rest of commissioners think.
It's definitely the most visible road and, and we know that it's well documented on our score and that it, it needs some maintenance, it needs some repairs. And, and again, I'm only bringing this to you because thinking if we move forward on Summit, we might be able to save some dollars. I'm trying to look for those kinda opportunities when we can.
You know what might be, you know, good, you know, when we get into this thing down the road is to take a field trip and all of us go out and look. I mean, I mean visually. I drive, I mean, a lot of that area I don't drive, so I, I really don't, you know, it's just out of my area. It probably wouldn't hurt just to, you know, take notes and go through that, you know, just look at everything like that. I, I'm just talking out loud right now, but I don't know.
How soon do we, how soon do we need to make decision on this? Later on? What size of decision right now that?
Yeah, if we wanna chip seal, I need it ordered this week. And we're kinda, our backs are kinda.
Well, I think we need to chip seal. I mean, what you were talking about, I mean, at least, if we don't do that, we're gonna be out of, out of cycle.
If you chip seal, you don't do radio lane, yeah.
That's what I figured. The chip seal, you don't do radio.
Oh, you, oh yours?
It's either or. You're either, you're either gonna do radio lane and spend a little bit more money to do radio lane, or you're gonna do chip seal. You can't, there's no way we can deal both.
Okay. Well, I may make the little street people mad, but I think we might need to do radio lane.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah.
That's where most of the traffic is.
I mean, school and then summertime, baseball, and there's a lot, a lot of people drive that road.
Yeah. And so KDOT classifies our roads as locals. That's where you pull out your driveway and you use that for a block or two to get to what they call a collector.
Mm-hmm.
Collectors are wider roads, carry a little more traffic to like a minor arterial. That one's considered a minor arterial. It's a, takes all the traffic to and from school and sports activities. So I guess in our mind on preservation projects, we tend to rank those a little higher on our priority list just because of the sheer volume of traffic it carries. I know it's inconvenient in front of someone's house, but honestly, sometimes they just go two blocks and they're off that road.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we, we have to address that. It's absolutely important to, to all the people.
Well, is, is any of those streets that, that we were on chip seal, that they got potholes and all that stuff, can we still fix the potholes? I mean.
We could, we'll still address it. We drove it today and mainly there's just some cracks. Maybe we look at, we still have our crack sealing program. We're trying to see.
Oh, yeah, we'll fix. We can crack seal, fix potholes. Well, we can fix potholes regardless, but we can crack seal it, for sure.
Do that.
Which we're gonna crack seal anyway, more likely. Cause we usually crack seal and then we do the other part.
Jay, I'm, I've, uh, being an ex postal employee, I can tell you that if you wanna hear what the streets are like, have your, ever, letter carrier come in here and they can tell you exactly what the problems are.
I'm sure you can.
Something you used to walk.
We used to, and we could tell you where the bad sidewalks were too. But now, pretty much everything is, is curbside to do right now.
Well, it sounds like commission's kinda agreeable about moving on with the ready, milling overlay, radio lane. Hopefully we can do the chip seal or take care of them.
And here's the thing, if, if the bids come back for radio lane, which they seem too excessive, um, then next year we can look at potentially doing twice as much chip seal. I mean, because if it's just, the bids are just ridiculous where we cannot afford it, then of course we're gonna look at chip seal and we'll probably look at doubling up for next year.
Yeah. Okay.
So we're not gonna abandon them. I mean, we're just, but um, also what it allows to do, then if we postpone chip seal, um, our, our crews are gonna be able to focus a lot more on the potholes, a lot of the other areas that have been kind of uh lacking, so.
Mm-hmm.
This uh, this item will come up when it gets closer to bidding. We'll have a, we'll, we'll have a.
The bids for Summit Street, they're out right now, correct?
July twenty-seventh.
Let me ask this question.
So we'll have a unit cost, a rough unit cost for milling overlay.
Okay.
Well, let me ask this question. If they come in lower than what we think, you know, we had money left to work, could we still do the chip and seal on s- some streets if the bids come in lower?
It's kinda like Lego blocks, I guess in my mind. We know we have five hundred thousand left in T-Works money. We wanna augi- augment the amount of money we have budgeted. Um, it all depends on how much Summit Street comes in, how much sales tax we have left to use towards Fifteenth and still use some T-Works money. Um, so I hate to dip into that too, too deep until we get far enough along with some of this.
I understand, but I'm saying if it came in, we would still have time this year to do it, I mean, on the chip and seal and some of that.
The chip seal, no. I think, we don't order materials this week. We're putting it off till next year, which I have to be honest, we've had enough turnover, I have enough green help in public services.
Okay.
We really need some extra time to train some of these guys. We've had a lot of um turnover, so we've got a lot of green help, but I think it's gonna be a struggle this year. Um, so a lot of guys have done it for the city for a lot of years and no longer with us or having health complications. Um, so I got a bunch of young guys that are excited to go do the work, but we're gonna have to train them.
Yeah, two of our more experienced individuals, one moved on to be a street superintendent down in Oklahoma a couple months ago. And the other one, of course, is battling cancer right now, so he won't be back. So, and they've been very, been, you know, they, they've, they know exactly how to get things done. And, and losing them has been, been tough, especially when you're looking at projects like that.
Yeah. Well, there's your direction, I guess.
Okay, thank you guys, and.
Um, and then just kind of an update on the budget. We're still working forward and Kathy and I are gonna be meeting this week um to go over it. But uh, we're getting closer to get some presented to the commission. Uh, and then we'll schedule a date for the external agencies to come present their request to the commission as well, so we're working on that.
When's the di- di- data, I mean, uh, we have to have it done by the end of August?
Yeah, August twenty.
There's, there.
Twenty-fifth has to be a, you have to have the uh hearing by the first part of August, so.
We'll have to have some, we'll have to have some work sessions?
Well, yeah, we'll have a work session for the budget. We'll probably have a work session for the uh external agency, so that way they can be here on a Friday versus coming in the evening, on a Tuesday evening, so.
Okay. Okay. How s- how far in advance do we need to set that up?
We could probably do it in a couple of weeks. Probably do it before our next meeting, Friday before our next.
Well, I won't be here.
Okay.
I'm, I'm gonna be gone fourteenth, fifteenth.
For the next meeting? I won't.
And you're gonna be gone the week after that, correct? Nineteenth and twentieth?
Well, I'll be gone the, the Tuesday or.
And Tuesday the nineteenth will be gone.
Yeah. But I could be here for the work session, you know, but I won't be here.
Hey, you'll be back on the twenty, when do you get back?
Uh, the twenty-fifth.
So you could do the twenty-sixth evening, twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
Okay, what's, we'll look at the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth?
Tuesday evening. Twenty-ninth I'm gonna be gone, so. Last time I was gone for, gone for external agency meeting, I wish I would've been here. By the, by what day?
Have, have to do what?
Okay. Alright, we'll look at our calendars. We'll get back with you. We'll get you a date.
Okay. Then have to be a Friday, does it?
No, it can be a week, as long as, as long as we're here.
Okay. Okay. Other business?
Um, this was kind of brought up, uh, an idea that you were having, uh, Mr. Mayor regards to have some community type meetings. Um, I put in there just kind of a placeholder, having the meetings potentially be called community conversations where we can have, individuals can come and talk about issues that they want. Just clarification on, and we can probably talk about projects that are coming up, so on so forth. Um, kinda like a s- conversation type series.
Is there any special time?
That would be something that'd be completely up to the commission to wanna do that. You know, we could even have them at like Steamy Joe's. We can have it at Daisy Maze. I mean, you, you don't have to have it in a particular place or time, you know, you can have them where they move around and just kind of, you know, depending on what, who and when and where and doesn't have to be full commission. It could be, you know, one or two staff members and.
Uh. Could be. Mornings, afternoons?
Yep, yep, could be whenever, just, you know, once a quarter or once every other month or whatever the commission so wishes.
Okay. What do you guys think?
Be up to you all.
So if we all show up, we'd have to advertise, right? I mean.
We would advertise them anyway, period, you know. There would be no action taken.
No action taken.
We would advertise them anyway, period, yeah, there would be no action taken, of course, but it would be, we'd advertise to the public regardless to have them be there.
Could- Yeah. Yeah, they, they could come and talk a, for a little while, but not excessive.
Yeah. Yeah, so they could come talk about projects, we can give them updates, you know, really it's just gonna be driven by them, the individuals that would be, be there.
So, yeah.
And we try to explain things to them best we can and-
So how would they be notified that you're gonna have these meetings?
We would advertise it, Andrew would advertise on Facebook, yeah, Facebook, on we- website.
Be on our website? Website, how many, are we getting a lot of hits now on that website?
Yeah, we are almost, we're getting close to sixteen hundred likes, I think, but I haven't seen what our hit numbers have been lately. And I think we average about thirteen hundred a week on Facebook.
Yeah, website was doing around.
Well, we could, uh, get together and if we can all be there, that's fine.
Yeah, and I'd, I'd leave it open, is that if you can be, if the commissioners can make it, great, if they can't, great, you know, we can mix it up, you know, do lunchtime, do a
Yeah.
you know, early morning, you know, before, you know, six thirty, seven o'clock, and do it in lunch, and do it in the evening, just wherever.
See what kind of response to get from the citizens.
Was this, was this the idea you ca- you had, uh, based on the Kobe guy?
Yeah.
Uh, and see, they don't have, they have a kind of a council that gets together.
They've been doing it for quite a while.
Yeah. Yeah, but they didn't, I mean, they had a, a set number of people that sh- that came, and they'd always do a lunch or supper somewhere.
Mm-hmm. And what, is Overland Park the other one, one of those that? One, there's one, another one that has a meetings from the citizens too, so hopefully with more informal, that we get more input.
Sounds good. We'll come up with some dates, we'll, we'll, if there's a with you, see, see where we wanna have it, maybe schedule one or two of them, and then go from there.
Yeah. There's a-
Okay, how's the movie thing been working?
Movies, we're done for now, we'll stick up August, um, first try in August, um, but it's, the pool one, we had s- just shy of seven hundred people at, at the pool for the movie.
Wow. Wow.
I mean, it was packed, and, uh, that'd be great right now as hot as it is, and it was, it was warm that day, it was really warm, so it went well.
Yeah.
Um, what we'll do, you know, lessons learned, we're gonna start later in the evening and just show one movie at the pool. Um, or Tony and I talked about actually building a box, 'cause we have to get it where the projector's dark and the screen, in between the projector and the screen are dark, so then it projects very well, and it's, um, 'cause once it got dark, the picture was perfect.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the main complaint I heard, it was not very visible, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, not for the first part, anyway, but then once the sun set, it, then it was fine.
Yeah. Yeah.
Later would probably be a good idea, 'cause it's pretty warm.
Yeah. But it was packed, oh my gosh, there was a ton of people there. Uh, we had some really good turnout, um, early on in the season, you know, when the heat started getting there, it just died off substantially, I mean, you probably still have oh, sixty, seventy people probably, um, this year weather's been a huge factor for us, I mean, it's just been,
Yeah, of course.
it's been really hot and it's been raining, it rained a couple ta- days on us, and it's just, it was a strange year.
Strange.
So, uh, but, well, I think we're gonna continue showing movies probably as long as we can this year, so we may show, end up showing another four or five movies
Mm-hmm.
before it gets just, gets too darn cold, but it'll probably be just like one or two week announcement, well, pr- probably at least two week announcement before, um, we have the movie. But like I said, our first one's gonna be in August, our next one, and, uh, that's either gonna be, uh, I think it's gonna be Zootopia, I think's what's gonna be that one, so.
Towards the end of August?
No, first week in August, yeah, and then we'll probably show a movie the second week of August, which may be Batman versus Superman,
First week?
or it'll be the new Jungle Book, which is the live action Jungle Book.
Okay.
'Cause it comes out the, around that same time, so we're still waiting to see, for sure.
Wow. Okay, any?
We having, having fireworks problems this year?
Z- z- well, we've had, we had third, how many calls did we have? And how much? Thirty nine calls for the seven day period, um, in-
For fire?
For fireworks, shooting fireworks, after hours.
Firework, I mean, and, okay.
Um, the police department did visit with several individuals if they were in the area and told them ten o'clock was a cutoff.
Yeah.
Um, and then there's a lot of instances where they call and we just, they were gone by the time we got there.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
The thirty nine calls is all we received in the seven day period, so not very many.
That's pretty good, is that last, the what, the last year?
Uh, we had- No, no, I think that was right, that was quite, quite a bit less, right or out, I can't remember the exact numbers, but as far as from a safety perspective, we had zero, um, firework related accidents, zero calls, zero fires, nothing, so it, I mean, from a safety perspective, it went very well.
Now, there was one fire out on the east radio lane that we feel
Okay.
they fired, you know, just, the stubble caught on fire.
East radio lane?
East radio line.
Nor- north of, uh, north of radio lane, you know, that, that we feel right there.
Yeah. Oh.
Surprise burn, so, yeah.
Well, that's what, that's what surprised me, that they, they said that, they got it out pretty quickly.
We didn't get it. I'll say, we didn't get a report on it.
No, they got it out pretty quickly, so.
Okay. The fire department put it out?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we had one fire, they didn't report, they didn't tell us.
They didn't tell us. Okay.
Yeah, we asked them this morning.
No, they were pretty much on the scene, so that might've been why, why they didn't, didn't report it.
Okay. Okay.
Anything else from the commissioners?
Uh, since somebody's gone our next meeting, I need somebody fill in for Stronger Field on that Wednesday.
You're the only one here?
We're, we're regulars.
What?
They never hurts to come to.
Next Wednesday?
Well, no, it'll be a week after next, it'll be the-
The twentieth?
The twentieth, yeah.
Twentieth, that's right, okay.
At night?
No, it's five thirty.
Five thirty. Stronger Field.
On Wednesday.
Okay.
And I'll tell Sean it, Karen will be carrying it.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Move your adjourners.
Well, you want to, five minutes, okay, I promised I'd give you your five minutes.
Oh. Oh, okay, hold that, hold that motion.
I'm gonna hit, I, uh.
Okay. Just wanted to show you real quick what we're working on, um, we've had a lot of conversation on Facebook the last few days about how to report complaints in the cities, so I think it's time to get rolling on this. Uh, we did talk about it when we did the redesign, but we, it's taken a while to get it implemented to the where I wanted it. Um, right now you can report issues with this button on the front page of the website, but it's basically just an email form. You can kind of scroll down, figure out what your issue is, fill out your info, we've received a couple of these, not many, it's, it's not really picking on, so I was wanting to go ahead and get to the grand reveal of what we've been working on, which is the citizen request tracker, so just to kind of preview what citizens will see, I'm hoping by the end of this week, um, you'll be, that link will take you here once we switch over. And eventually there will be flags everywhere for the different issues we have, we don't have any 'cause we haven't gone public, but it'll list them, and they're color coded by what's, what's been reported but not responded to, what staff's working on, and what's been completed, is basically the scheme, so people will be able to see if the issue they want to report has already been reported, and hopefully not get a lot of the double, triple reporting that we get right now. Um, but to actually report, there's several different ways they can do it, they can create an account if they want to, which will allow them to come in and kind of track what's going on, but we know that a lot of citizens have concerns about anonymity, especially if they're reporting things their neighbors are doing, so they can, they can do an anonymous report, and that's what I'm gonna demonstrate here. Well, I was hoping to. Try that again. And we have bugs. Come on.
Doesn't like you?
It worked on my computer. Try it one more time.
So if they file this complaint, do, will we be able to give them kind of an idea of when it's gonna be responded to?
Yeah, the way the system works, the, um, there's an automated response that we'll set up for all these that go out, and it'll say, hey, we received your message. And then there should be a secondary response that says, this is now being acted on or we're looking into it. You know, a lot of these we'll still probably have to transfer into ComK, especially if they're property maintenance nuisance complaints, 'cause that system isn't gonna go away internally because the way it allows us to track these cases for legal purposes. Um, but that's not, I mean, we, we have a public interface for ComK right now, nobody uses it, it's too cumbersome. Well, that's-
Try the blue one.
It was really cool. Uh, just, uh, just to kind of give you a verbal preview then. Um, basically they'll be able to log in and they can, there's different ways that they can show where the complaint is, they can drag like the little Google man to the location, they could enter the address, and they can click a button and it'll update with their GPS location if they're using their phone. So, that should hopefully help with flexibility that citizens can quickly, 'cause if they don't tell us where it's at, we can't do anything about it, and that is a big problem, especially with the phone calls. Um, and then it'll also, you know, we'll have, I've already created like a red water complaint, and so it'll have different fields that can fill in that, to give us the information we need, and we'll just have a whole list of those, and the questions will differ based on what the type of, of need is. And, so they'll be able to quickly go in, they can attach a photo, and on a smartphone you can take the photo with it and attach it right there, update your location, boom, you're done, so what we're trying to hopefully steer is the citizens that want to put things on Facebook and then just assume that we're gonna see them, well, there's a lot on Facebook going on, it's hard to catch everything. But to give it that same ease of access so that they will hopefully let us know what's going on in a way that's still trackable, we can go in, we can pull reports on this. Um, we can see the chain of, of the responses, there's a way to make it go up a level, so if you're not getting a response from the first person that's supposed to do it for a certain time, say they're on vacation or they just didn't see the email, it in, it goes up the food chain basically, so there's a lot of good aspects to this, and I just kind of wanted to preview it for citizens, unfortunately, for some reason it will not show up on this computer, but uh, we'll have a release going out once it's live and some screenshots for people too, so hopefully they will take advantage of it.
When, when there's, the problem is sent to the city, does each department able to, uh, answer that question to the citizen?
Yeah, every department that will deal with this is in there, um, police and fire will not be, 'cause we want everything to go through dispatch, but all the public works divisions, parks, facilities, and, uh, I don't know if we'll finance in there, I'll check, but it'll be broken down, and then we've got contact persons who will have a- and access into the system, and it's all email based, so the nice thing is you don't have to log in and go try to sort out the ma- the dots on the map.
Well, yeah, but our department heads be looking at it, or will you be looking at it, and you report back to them what's going on, or?
Yeah, we can set, like, we can set Randy up on the pothole complaint, so he's the second or third contact.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely, and then I'll, I'll continually monitor, especially when we're implementing it to make sure that we're, we've got a good process going on, but, you know, we get a lot of this stuff by email anyway, and I just bounce the emails where they need to go, hopefully this will kind of automate that a little more. Um, and you can put, you know, when the city holidays are in there so that it knows to tell them, hey, this isn't gonna get addressed till after the Fourth of July. So there's, there's a lot of nice aspects to it, and it totally integrates with our website as it stands right now, this is just an additional product that we weren't ready to enable when we launched the website.
Think that'll, uh, decrease the number of phone calls, maybe?
That's my goal, that is my goal.
That's all our hopes.
Cut down the phone calls upstairs, cut down the, the angry citizens, cut down on, you know, the Facebook stuff, and just try to
Okay.
a- and, and to show what we're doing too, it's not just that we're acting on the, on the complaint or the report. It, it maps it, it shows the citizens where the actions are being taken, and hopefully they'll see that this works and they'll be more inclined to go through the system, so it'll take some time, but I think, I think people will really like it, especially with the phone aspect.
But you're still gonna have some people that aren't computer literate, that don't use Facebook, that don't use
Right.
uh, websites, so you're still gonna have phone calls.
Well, yeah.
Absolutely.
Still have phone calls.
Oh, absolutely. We've got those systems down to the science though.
Okay, I have one more question I th- just thought of, uh, you know, we talked a while back about having more people to make, uh, write citations about grass, tall grass, nuisance it, are we getting a lot of those, I mean, are we writing a lot of those?
As far as citations?
I mean, notices, the-
Send out letters for tall grass letters?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're sending out quite a few tall grass letters.
Okay, I know we'd want to have some people-
And we're in the hiring process for a second, um, service officer right now as well, so, but we do not have anyone hired.
Okay. I don't know if it was big backlog.
Yeah, we're still doing the process, no, that, they, they got that caught up, they hired a t- a temporary employee across the way
Okay.
um, that's helping with the paperwork side of it.
All right. Okay. Anything else? Charles?
There's always a backlog, though, I don't want to say there is, because there is.
Commissioner Tweedy?
My motion stands.
I'll second.
It's been made by Commissioner Tweedy.